Good evening and welcome to the June 17, 2024, meeting of the Roseville City Council. Call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start by announcing that Council Vice Mayor Bernuscony is absent and exused from tonight's meeting. With that, we'll move on to Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Here.
And Mayor Haldashell.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Councilmember Mendoza to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the city clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening and welcome to the city of Roseville's regular city council meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to our city council and not to any member of the public or anyone else from staff. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded. For comments on non-agendized items, members of the public may address the city council regarding any item not listed on tonight's agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction at our city council. Public comments are limited to 25 minutes, and each speaker will have three minutes during the first segment. If the time limitation is reached during the first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments. The Brown Act does prohibit our city council from discussing, debating, or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. For items that appear on the agenda tonight, speakers will have five minutes to provide input that should be relevant to the item being considered tonight. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comment. The city council encourages public participation. Please be courteous during the meeting and refrain from cheering or jeering at comments or actions or in any other way disrupting the process of the conduct of the people's business tonight. Persons continuing to violate these meeting procedures after being given a warning will be asked to leave the meeting. Lastly, if addressing the city council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, thank you for your civic participation tonight, and welcome to the city of Roseville.
Thank you very much. As our city clerk mentioned, we'll start the evening off with public comments on non-agenda items. Please come to the podium. I do have one card and from Gary Adams, so in a moment. Go ahead.
I just wanted to talk about what's happening in my city right now. I'm seeing a lot of, I'm seeing a lot, I'm seeing a lot of speeding vehicles on Woodcreek Junction, and apparently I saw a car swerving into our bike lane today, this morning, and apparently, you know, people just don't like to drive anymore. I'm getting tired of the speeding. I'm getting tired of just people not maintaining their lanes anymore. I'm just, I'm just tired of it, and we need to look at, I just can't see, I have a disability where I can't drive a car. I like to walk and, you know, just, I like to walk, and I live at, I live at 1098 Woodcreek Junction Boulevard, and I heritage park department. I'm seeing people speeding and not just driving way too fast in our apartment complex. I'm just, I'm just getting tired of it. I'm fed up with speeding and just regular driving. I'm just tired of it. I don't want to get hit by a car. It's like, you know, this is getting ridiculous, you know? I'd like to see more police officers and more, just more police, like, Roseville PD in my apartment complex because I'm just tired of the speeding. I'm tired of losing the speeding vehicles every time. I'm just, I'm fed up with it, and people, either people slow down because we got kids outside that like to walk, and when they go to school and they, and they use the crosswalks. But we do need better street lighting. We do need any better crosswalks because it's just getting very dangerous, and it's just, you know, I have a disability where, I have autism where I can't drive, so I'm just getting tired. I like to see more buses. That's what I like to see. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a speaker card from Gary Adams.
I wanted to talk today about the Johnson pool that's being remodeled.
Could you lean a little bit more into the microphone?
A little closer.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you very much.
So during the COVID years, the two summers, '20 and '21, I believe, the pool was closed because of COVID, so the kids missed out on using the pool. Last year, I noticed that they replaced the fence and put in some grandstands and something like, stuff like that, which I thought was an improvement. I have heard that kids were jumping over the fence and using the pool after hours. I don't know if that's true or not. I don't know why you can't put security cameras up there. But my biggest gripe right now is the fact, the timing of when they're remodeling that pool. I mean, we're in the middle of a heat wave, and these kids, it's a neighborhood pool, and a good portion of them walk to the pool because that's their neighborhood. They don't have that now. And one of the few things that I enjoy in the summer, I don't enjoy the heat, obviously, but driving by there and hearing those kids yelling and having a great old time, and they don't have that. And I don't know if the funding for that was federal funding or why the timing worked out this way, but anybody, I talked to a few people, why didn't they do it three months ago or three months from now? Because those kids are losing another summer with the pool.
Yeah.
I just think it's a travesty. So I don't know what department was in charge of that, but from what I've heard, they got five layers of management. You would think somebody would think about the kids.
Well, thanks very much. Mr. Casey, do you want to?
We have your contact information correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department, and we'll certainly ask them to reach out and explain the process.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it was in, let me just say, even though we don't debate this, it wasn't intentional, so I think the consideration was made for seasonality of it, so.
I mean.
We'll reach out to you.
It quit raining in March or February. It certainly had enough time to do it before the school was out.
Sir, the Brown Act, the Brown Act prohibits us from responding any deeper because it's not an agendized item, but we will certainly reach out and explain. There's a reason.
Okay.
All right. That's all the cards I have. Does anyone else have a comment on non-agend items?
So a couple of weeks ago, at a protest, a protester was arrested by Roseville PD for carrying a sign and using a megaphone, and then was charged with riot charges and put on a $250,000 bond. Now, I want to come up here and tell you about a Supreme Court ruling from 2005, Castle Rock v. Gonzalez, where the Supreme Court stated it is the law of the land that law enforcement, police, do not have a duty to protect people. That is their reading of the 14th Amendment. The 14th Amendment only applies to property. Now, if police don't have a duty to protect us, why do we give them public safety money? Why do we have to treat them with any sort of respect or compliance if any interaction with law enforcement now means that I need to take my self-defense in consideration first because they're not going to do it? Hell, they fought the Supreme Court to be allowed to deny protection to people, and that decision was made over the death of three children that police failed to protect. So if you guys can't figure out that we need to move past property values, housing prices, and housing people instead, because you can't expect any of us to believe that you're not maintaining segregation when you won't change the policies that maintain it. Have a good day.
Anyone else have a public comment on non-agend items? Seeing none, we'll move on to, I'll have the city clerk announce the procedures for approving the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of our city council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the city council staff or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such requests. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to pull an item from consent for further discussion tonight? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, at this time, on item six, the consent calendar, the city council will consider approving items 6.1 through 6.31. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve? So moved. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashell.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Let's move into the resolutions portion of our agenda, and our first item is item 7.1, Amoruso Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Improvement Area Number One, Bond Issuance, and our Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer Dennis Kaufman will give us a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Haldashell, council members. The purpose of this agenda item tonight is to authorize the issuance of bonds for the Amoruso Ranch Communities Facilities District Number One, Improvement Area Number One. For a little background, the purpose of setting up a Community Facilities District, or CFD, is to create a land-secured financing tool to fund construction and acquisition of authorized facilities or services. This particular CFD was formed in June of 2023. The bonds that we're recommending authorization to issue tonight are in an amount up to $36 million. The maximum authorized debt for this district is $594 million, of which $124 million is allocated to this first improvement area. The authorized facilities for this CFD are listed here on the slide and include transportation improvements, including but not limited to Westbrook Boulevard and West Sunset Boulevard, as well as utility infrastructure and park and open space improvements. Amoruso Ranch specific plan is at the north end of the city limits, up there at the top of the map with the arrow, and the entire specific plan makes up the CFD boundary lines. The Improvement Area Number One is the, in the southwestern corner of the district outlined there by a solid dark line. The district is south of West Sunset Boulevard, and that Improvement Area Number One is just west of Westbrook Boulevard. So the staff recommendation tonight is to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds for Amoruso Ranch CFD Number One, Improvement Area Number One, and approving the related actions and documents, including the form of the preliminary official statement which is used to market the bonds. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Council, have any questions? I just want to make sure, I always struggle with math. So the maximum amount of indebtedness for the series is 36 million, but for the entire district, it's 594. So the series is just that portion that you, as you showed on the map of CFD one boundaries. Okay, thanks. I'll open it for public comment. I'll close public comment, unless the council has any additional questions or comments, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 7.1, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 24-253, a resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of Improvement Area Number One of the city of Roseville, Amoruso Ranch Community Facilities District, CFD Number One, a public facility, and approving and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement, a bond purchase agreement, and an acquisition agreement, as well as approving the form of preliminary official statement, approving the sale of such bonds, and approving other related documents and actions. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. We'll next move into our ordinance portion of the agenda. Item 8.1, Roseville Municipal Code Amendment Regarding Massage Services. Our deputy city attorney, no, our assistant, never assistant, deputy, I'm never very good at that, Joe Speaker is going to make a presentation, along with Captain Josh Simon and our Community Service Officer Erica Broussard.
Good evening, Mayor Haldashell, members of the city council. As you said, I'm Joe Speaker, your Assistant City Attorney, and with me tonight are Police Captain Josh Simon and Community Service Officer Erica Broussard with the Roseville Police Department. So we're here to present and recommend the introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 9.10 of the Roseville Municipal Code, which pertains to massage services within the city. Chapter 9.10 of the municipal code regulates massage business services. This includes permitting for massage business establishments. Every massage business is required to obtain a specific massage business permit from the city. These permits are handled through the police department. Chapter 9.10 also sets forth operating conditions and requirements. This covers things like health standards and requirements for sanitary conditions, advertising regulations, business hours, record keeping, and other conditions for actual operation of the massage businesses. It also sets the minimum training and education standards for who may provide massage services. In recent years, the city has seen increased issues with massage businesses. A lot of these issues pertain to unpermitted massage businesses, meaning they haven't obtained a business permit or their permit has expired or is no longer valid. The city has also seen increased issues with illicit and unlawful massage business activity. The city has also recently conducted numerous compliance checks of massage businesses, and one issue that has become very clear is that many are not complying with the existing management and record-keeping conditions, which are necessary to demonstrate to the city that massage businesses are operating legitimately and are not engaging in unlawful or unwanted business practices. The purpose of this ordinance is to address and abate these ongoing challenges. Staff believes that this can be accomplished through two primary types of changes to the municipal code. The first is closing certain gaps within our current regulations, including tightening up our education and training standards for those providing massage services. The second is by better aligning our regulations with existing state law and the common practices of many of our neighboring agencies. For background, in 2008, the state legislature enacted the Massage Therapy Act. This established the California Massage Therapy Council, or CAMTC, also sometimes referred to as CAMTC, which is the state-level body that oversees a voluntary system for massage therapist certification. Basically, it created a statewide metric for education and training that became a, to become a massage therapist. It also limited local agencies' ability to regulate massage services. Essentially, it brought most of the regulation for massage services into the state arena. In 2014, the Massage Therapy Act was amended, and importantly, the amendment returned some land use authority to local agencies and clarified that cities and counties can regulate the business activities of massage establishments. While the legislature kept the option for voluntary certification through CAMTC, it also became clear that local agencies could adopt their own less stringent training and education standards if they elected to. In other words, CAMTC certification for massage therapists became somewhat of the default standard, but local agencies could set their own requirements. In 2017, the then Roseville City Council adopted what is currently Chapter 9.10 of the municipal code. The ordinance set forth a regulatory framework for massage services. This includes permitting for massage businesses, operational requirements for massage businesses, and the training and education standards for who may actually provide massage services. Because CAMTC certification was still relatively new, and there were some concerns amongst the business community, the city adopted an ordinance that established somewhat less restrictive requirements for those who provide massage services. Under the existing city ordinance, an individual can provide massage if they meet two basic requirements. They have to have a satisfactory background check, and they have to complete 125-hour program in massage therapy. As you'll see on the next slide from Erica, this is quite a bit less than what CAMTC requires for their certification.
So this chart displays two things, CMT certification requirements, $300 for a two-year certificate, successfully completing 500 hours of training, and they do require proof of transcripts. The other side of the chart shows the current requirements for the Roseville Police Department. It's $159 for a two-year permit and the completion of the 125 hours. We do not require providing proof of transcripts. Some things to note, that there is a lack of specificity with this. There's no requirement for transcripts, which means that there's no way to verify the validity of the training certificates. It requires additional time of staffing to determine if the schools are approved and accredited via reaching out to CAMTC or BPPE, who is the Bureau for Private Post-Secondary Education. Training requirements are less. The next chart shows our neighboring jurisdictions for what they are currently charging and what their requirements are. Closely related, Rockland and Lincoln, they do require CMT certification. Their permit fees are $771 and $800 in comparison to our $159. The next chart, the increased education and training requirements and higher permitting fees in neighboring jurisdictions have made it more challenging for certain massage businesses to operate in those areas. This has resulted in certain massage businesses and massage therapists relocating their services to Roseville where the requirements are lower. While this has included some legitimate massage services, it has also included illegitimate businesses and illicit massage services. It is estimated that there are approximately 150 to 200 massage establishments and/or massage therapists acting as independent contractors within the city. Approximately 30 of those establishments are currently engaging in some type of illicit massage business activity based upon law enforcement databases. Illegitimate and illicit massage businesses have significant negative impacts on the surrounding community. They affect property values, increase crime, support human trafficking, negatively impact adjacent businesses, and adversely affect the city's images and reputation.
So based on all of that, we feel the best way to address these issues and abate the illicit and unlawful massage business activities is by strengthening our municipal code, specifically increasing the education and training standards, increasing record-keeping and management requirements, strengthening our inspection and enforcement options, and increasing penalties for noncompliance. The primary change to Chapter 9.10 that we're proposing is a new requirement that any person providing massage services must obtain a valid certificate from CAMTC, meaning they need to meet the training and education standards that are set forth by CAMTC. Although this is a higher standard, it is widely seen as the default now and has been adopted by our neighboring agencies. There will be one exception, essentially a grandfathering provision, for massage therapists who have been practicing in the city and are in good standing, and I'll mention more about that exemption on the next slide. There's also going to be a grace period for this new requirement, and it won't go into effect until January 1 of 2025. The new ordinance requires businesses to provide additional information about their employees and independent contractors, so the city has a better understanding of who is providing the massage services. Changes to the status of an employee or independent contractor are also required to be reported to the city within seven days of the change, and it prohibits new massage businesses from being located at the same location where a prior massage business was closed due to criminal activity. This prohibition used to be one year, and so what we're proposing is increasing to The amendments to Chapter 9.10 also specify that any violation is a misdemeanor. It's important to note that this does not require that the city charge every violation as a misdemeanor, and the city still has discretion to pursue violations through administrative citations. However, specifying in the municipal code that the violation of Chapter 9.10 are misdemeanors will allow the city to pursue increased fine amounts in the future, and this is important because it's anticipated that staff will be coming back to council in the future with another ordinance revising the city's fine and bail schedule to impose higher fines for certain code violations. And lastly, as I mentioned before, the new ordinance includes an exception to the CAMTC certification requirement. Massage therapists may continue to provide massage services without the CAMTC certification if they satisfy three factors. First, they must have worked as a massage professional in the city for the last three years. Second, they meet the city's current education and training requirements. And third, they must be in good standing with the city and meet all requirements for providing massage services. If someone qualifies for an exemption, it lasts for two years, and it has to be renewed. Captain Simon?
Some additional benefits of the proposed ordinance is that it fosters an environment for legitimate businesses to grow. It reduces the number of illegitimate businesses and reduces time spent addressing businesses who are conducting illegal activities.
Yeah, thank you.
The amendment also provides clarity to the permitting process. Regarding community outreach, we've notified the Chamber of Commerce of the proposed change and invited them to provide feedback. They were appreciative of our efforts to tighten the permitting, training, and educational standards. Letters have been mailed to all massage business permit holders informing them of the proposed changes, and we've received many positive responses and no real pushbacks, just some general questions for clarification about the changes.
So for all the reasons discussed tonight, staff is recommending that council introduce for first reading an ordinance amending Chapter 9.10 of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding massage services, and also adopt a resolution establishing an exemption certificate fee and renewal fee, which will be incorporated into the city's existing fee schedule, and notably that resolution establishing the fee only becomes effective if and when the ordinance is fully adopted. And with that, we're available for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Council, questions? Councilman Albert?
I have two questions. One is, if we know there's about 30 businesses with illicit activities going on, why are they still in business? I'm just kind of, but the fair question?
I, so, you know, part of the difficulty is, it's one thing to identify the business, but based on the current structure of the ordinance, because it regulates the massage, the permit of the massage business itself, you can create a situation where you have, and this way I can describe it, is kind of like a game of whack-a-mole, where even if you identify the business, you identify the person. If the person's an independent contractor, person is shut down, if there's some, I'll call it a kingpin for lack of a better phrase, there's just somebody else put into the play, somebody with the minimum certification, the minimum qualifications, may or may not have valid transcripts. So by increasing that requirement for the actual training, having that CAMTC certification, you make it so that that game of what I'll call whack-a-mole of replacing that illegitimate business becomes far more difficult. So it isn't just that we know 30 businesses and shut the businesses down that you do that, and then what happens is another one pops up because there, it's more, it's frankly easier to open a massage business in Roseville than it is elsewhere, which is a good thing from a business standpoint, but not from an illicit business standpoint.
Another question was, we have, we're proposing changing the moratorium. If a business does get in trouble, they can't come back to that same location right now for a year, but we're changing it to three years. Why the three years? What's the difference?
And you guys can, again, feel free to jump in and for more statistics, but what we have found is that there are certain sites where have probably been identified by the illicit community as being spots that illicit community as being spots that were popular for patrons of that activity. And the problem is, what we found is if there's a bad actor in a spot, even within a year, if another actor opens in that spot, another masseuse or massage business, sometimes the clientele expects that same spot to be there. So putting that distance, that gap between that helps prevent that kind of game of, you know, revolving door, if you will. I don't know if there's more to it, but if that is accurate for that piece, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Other questions?
Just a comment that, you know, there are a lot of good massage therapists and organizations, and I think this keeps everything above board.
Councilmember Madanza? All right, I'll open it for public comment. Do we have a public comment on this item? Sorry, I didn't see it there.
Hello, I'm Beverly May. I'm Director of Governmental Affairs and Human Trafficking with the California Massage Therapy Council. CAMTC has a long history of working with cities and counties to make suggestions for proposed changes to their ordinances that incorporate best practices used by other jurisdictions that take aim at illicit massage establishments by treading lightly on legitimate massage professionals. This is a difficult balance to strike, and we're always striving to incorporate new suggested changes that get us closer to this important goal. Ordinances are complicated, and there's many moving parts that work together to make an entire ordinance, one that contains best practices. By providing the city, CAMTC has given you different alternatives to consider to strengthen your ordinance while protecting the profession. We feel the city has done a very good job of incorporating reasonable and cost-effective tools to prevent the hijacking of the massage profession by criminals and human traffickers, and to facilitate abating the approximately 29 illicit establishments identified as of last April. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, unless the council has any additional questions or comments. I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 8.1, the city council will consider introducing for a first reading an ordinance of the Council of the City of Roseville amending Chapter 9.10 of Title IX of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding massage services, and adopting Resolution Number 24-271, adopting massage exemption, certificate, application, and renewal fees, and incorporating the fees into the schedule of user and regulatory fees. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilor Madanza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuichi.
Yes.
And Mayor Hauda Shel.
Yes. Thank you very much for your presentation. Next up, we'll have reports and presentations. 9.1, C-63 Park Site Master Plan Approval, with our Park and Planning Development Manager, Tara G., and our Parks and Recreation Library Director, Jill Geller.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Hauda Shel, members of the council. I am Jill Geller, your Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Director. Tara and I are very happy to be here tonight to share with you two different park master plans. We are going to start with C-63 Neighborhood Park, and I'll turn it over to Tara, G., our Park Planning and Development Manager, to share information with you.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here to present the master plan for C-63. It is a two-and-a-half-acre park site located in the Creekview area. The roads surrounding the park are Lemonade Lane, Treehouse Lane, Lower Bank Drive, and Grass Creek Drive. The total budget for this project is $1.2 million, and this includes all costs associated with the project, not only construction, but what we call soft costs, such as design, permitting, inspection, and project management. Typically, when it comes to a budget, 25% to 30% of project budget is allocated for soft costs. For C-63, this leaves approximately $800,000 to $900,000 for actual construction. It's, I wanted to note that the park is not yet owned by the city. It's typically transferred to the city before we start construction. For the public outreach effort, they began in September of 2023 with a virtual workshop. Approximately 40 residents attended, and we received a lot of feedback about a children's play area with shade, basketball, picnic, and grass areas being the top priorities. Other items suggested were splash pads, pickleball, and skate tracks. And in this meeting, there were a large number of comments from the residents that didn't necessarily agree. For example, restroom, no restroom. Half-court for basketball, full-court for basketball, pickleball, or basketball. So there were a lot of different ideas, and it was bantered around quite a bit. But taking all that feedback and considering the size and shape of the park, the close proximity to the residents, limited parking, traffic concerns, and the budget, a rough sketch shown here was presented to the neighbors at an in-person meeting in December. Thirty people attended that meeting. And as a representative, the thick dashed lines that are shown on this graphic are proposed walking paths throughout. There's also a children's play area, swings and picnic, more towards the middle, and a separation between the half-court for basketball and the children's play area. It's also important to point out that the lower portion of the park shown in hatch lines indicates natural water-conserving plantings in clusters and bark mulch. And I'll explain a little bit more about this in a minute. Items such as a full-court for basketball, splash pad, pickleball, skate track, dog parks are typically amenities that attract users from beyond the neighborhood. Given the location and the limitations described earlier, these items do not fit within the context of the immediate neighborhood and would increase the concerns related to noise, parking, and traffic. During the in-person meeting, it was suggested that the basketball court be moved more north, or even further north, because the neighbors have social events that occur frequently with food trucks. People could use the basketball court to bring their lawn chairs and socialize while eating, and in a vote at the meeting, those in attendance preferred the dual use of the basketball court area as well as the social area. The rough sketch was then revised to reflect feedback from the December meeting, and a two-week write-in period began at the end of March. Thirteen people voted, in which nine supported the park, one did not, and four expressing concern about the main cluster of park amenities that are close to their homes. Additionally, the Neighborhood Association posted the master plan on their Facebook page, where 21 people commented and were in support of the proposed plan. Many of the comments did, however, ask for a swing area, and due to budget concerns, the swings were not originally added. Given the number of comments asking for swings, we revised the master plan to add this amenity. However, to ensure we meet budget, the natural grass area was downsized, as you will see in the final master plan in an upcoming slide. Regarding the concern about the location of the more active amenities in the more northern area of the park, the majority of the neighborhood asked that the half-court for basketball be moved to the north because of the social activities that happen on Grass Creek Drive, which is the road at the north with the food trucks. To realize greater efficiencies in clustering the play area, the picnic areas, and swings, the amount of concrete serves multiple purposes and allows the budget, the design to meet the budget. It should be also noted that the half-court for basketball is generally less active, less noisy, and serves more of a family environment in the context of a neighborhood park as compared to a full-court for basketball. So the draft master plan proposes the following improvements: a multi-use purpose court for basketball and social gatherings, a shaded play area, swings, shaded picnic area, a looped pathway, natural grass, landscaping and irrigation. Again, these improvements meet the $800,000 to $900,000 construction budget, and if approved, as the plan is further refined, the grass area may further be decreased or enlarged based on construction costs at that time. Other options to preserve the size of the grass while meeting budget could include elimination of some of the active amenities. However, the feedback from the residents placed a higher priority on active amenities for the park rather than a larger grass area. In addition to the park feature shown, some residents asked for consideration of a zip line. This graphic shows how one could be incorporated into the plan. The added cost of the zip line is in excess of $65,000 and will cause the project to exceed the overall budget. This will be included in the construction documents as an add-alternative. However, the overall grass area will need to be reduced further should we consider adding the zip line, in order to meet the budgetary constraints. So once we receive bids, we can make a final determination of what can be included in the construction of the park. In order to be fully transparent with the budgetary constraints, the master plan has been adjusted to include notations, which include the potential for a zip line based on bids and budget, indications of the potential increase or decrease of the turf area, also based on bid and budget, and that the lower portion of the park, as shown here, will be planned for pockets of water-conserving plantings and bark mulch. This plan was shared with the Parks and Recreation Commission at their June meeting, and the commission made the recommendation to forward this plan to council for formal approval. It is at this time I want to pause for a moment to talk about park financing as it applies to parks in Creekview and Sierra Vista. In the case of Creekview, the park financing plan was developed in 2011, more than 13 years ago. The budgets were tight, but were the best guess at that time. And using these numbers, park fees were established, and as you know, are collected during the building permit process. When we are ready to build, a construction cost index or an inflationary factor is applied for each year since the adoption of the planned area. This creates a budget for each park. So fast forward to today. While we would like to think we're over COVID, or at least post-COVID situation, the issues related to post-COVID is still affecting the construction industry in regards to labor, manufacturing delays, materials unavailability, and more. The pricing has started to stabilize, but they're not coming down. Regulations such as Clean Water Act, which requires stormwater pollution protection in the form of plans, monitoring and reporting, and the Clean Air Act, where equipment used for construction must meet current emissions control standards, also impact the cost of construction. These were not contemplated in the financing plan back in 2011, and these regulations are costly to implement. While we are not in a drought today, considerations of drought need to always be in the forefront. Droughts are cyclical and will return time and time again. So we are prudent when we are looking at the amount of grass that we incorporate into each park design. For C-63, it is the first of four parks to be built in Creekview, and we are very cautious to stay within the established budgets of each park so we can ensure that the very last park can also be built. This leads to difficult decisions and choices to be made in the designs of our parks moving forward. While we would like to be able to provide a variety of amenities as much as possible, we continue to be challenged by both the available funding resources and the increased cost of construction. So for example, for C-63, if we were to build to the desires of the residents, we would require between $350,000 and $400,000 more to build, more funding to build all of the amenities that they wish to have. So what's next for C-63? If approved, we will move forward with construction document preparation, obtain permits, and work towards breaking ground sometime in the spring of 2025, and based on that, the park could open in the spring of 2026. Before you tonight, we are seeking approval from the city council to approve the master plan of C-63 Neighborhood Park. This concludes my presentation, and we stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Tara. Council, have any questions? Councilman Albert?
I do. I'm excited that we're able to get a park to this community because they have nowhere to walk to. They're kind of landlocked out there without crossing big roads, so it's nice that we're getting it. It's really heartbreaking to know that we've, because of the time lapse, and like you explained, the parks are just underfunded for doing a really good quality park, like we used to be able to do in the good old days. One of my concerns right now is when I'm looking at the two maps, we talked about turf area with a bunch of bark below, but that sidewalk is a pretty big delineator. And is it possible to move the sidewalk down so we still have the future possible turf? Because I don't think we're going to rip out cement later. Is there a way to put bark on both sides of it so we don't have to lose the actual sidewalk?
Is that something that was discussed at the community meetings, or is this something that's a new add?
I was there, and I don't remember the sidewalk. I just seen the pictures, the sidewalk's different.
You do extensive outreach in this process, and so, you know, you would have to take something like this back to the community to see if it's embraced by the entire community, wouldn't you?
Well, adjusting a sidewalk is certainly something that we could work on. If we were to have additional funding at the end, after the fourth park is, there's, where the sidewalk is doesn't limit us from adding more turf. In fact, the lower area with the bark and pockets of planting, there are two lines, if you will, walkways that are decomposed granite, and those can easily be removed and not be affected by any concrete work.
Right. And so what I'm saying, though, is you'd have, you'd put grass below the sidewalk in the second picture, where in the first picture, if you just kept the sidewalk down, then you might have bark above it, and then eventually the bark would go away. That's my other comment, is I just noticed that you're going to have a sidewalk kind of in the way of your grass if you add grass later.
Right. Now, keep in mind, this is representative. Again, as we're going through more detail and refinement, we'll be able to understand where that walkway ends up being, and it could be, we can look at, you know, future, we're always looking at future potential for expansion should, you know, more resources be made available.
Any other, is that it?
I just had a comment. You know, a question, a question. I'm glad how you were talking about that you're working with the community and some of their ideas, but also the reality of, like, this is 2.5 acres, and what do you do in that kind of space? And this might be too big, and this might, you know, not fit, so that it, it's, sometimes what you want doesn't work there. And I think that's helpful for the community, because then they'll see the whys. And so, not put it back to reality, but sometimes things just don't fit, and sometimes you need to know that. Or what's better in a small park versus a regional park?
Right.
Councilmember Madanza, questions?
No questions, thank you, Mayor.
So this is, this park has been accelerated ahead of its usual schedule because of a community request, right?
Yes, yes. Our focus was on another park, but based on community input, we switched the.
And that was the park that was across the street by the elementary school?
Right.
So you accelerated this one, okay. And then the zip line you mentioned, is that similar to the zip line at Central Park?
Yes, it's similar, or at Elizabeth James.
Zipping down that line?
Yeah, ping and go down.
I did that. I think there's video proof I did that. Those are my questions. I'll open it up for public comment.
This is Arachiga, President of the Creekview Neighborhood Association. I just have nothing but good things to say about Tara. We have been working with her from the early, from the project. Her team and herself have shown patience, cooperation, kindness, and just an unlimited amount of patience. We pound her with so many questions, so many crazy ideas. I just don't know how you do it. I just don't know how you do it. And I'll just keep it short. On behalf of the community, I just want to say, and for the lack of further words, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Or comments? I'm sorry. Any other public comment? I'll close. Public comment, bring it back to the council, see if there are any, any comments. I forgot one of my questions. So, in the cycle of park naming, when will the, is this in the current cycle of park namings?
Yes, it is. It's currently, the name submissions are currently open until the end of the month, and this is one of them.
I'm sorry, they close when?
At the end of the month.
At the end of July?
Yes.
Okay, great. And the answer to your question is 25 years of, plus of doing this, so.
I might interject, Mayor, it's 27 years this week.
Wow.
Good. Glad to have you.
Absolutely. Let's, 35 is the goal, okay?
Or 182 parks, I don't know.
I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you. On item 9.1, the city council will consider approving the master plan for the C-63 park, a two and a half acre neighborhood park located off of Lemonade Lane at the Lower Bank Drive within the Creekview area of Roseville. Will, if I can please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilor Mendoza.
Yep.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshell.
Yes. Why don't you guys stay in place and do the next item, 9.1. I missed it. Turn the page, Bruce. 9.2, KT-52 School Park and Master Plan.
Well, just to reintroduce ourselves, I'm Jill Geller, Director of Parks Recreation and Libraries with Ms. Tara G., Park Planning and Development Manager, and now we're going to talk about KT-52. Tara?
All right. Thank you, Jill. This park is a 7.6 acre site located in Sierra Vista on Sierra Village Drive at Silver Spruce, which is west of Westbrook Boulevard. It is located immediately south of a future elementary school. The timing of the elementary school's construction has not yet been determined. The budget for this site is 3.6 million, which includes the 20% to 30% soft costs that I mentioned earlier in the, as the other presentation. This equates to about $2.7 million in construction. Again, the park property is not owned by the city as yet, and will typically be transferred to the city before we start construction. Before I go on and discuss about public outreach for this park, I wanted to share a little bit of the difference between this park, a school park site, and a neighborhood park, such as C-63 that we just spoke of. School park sites are also considered neighborhood parks, but are larger in order to accommodate more organized sports and courts. To the extent possible, we look at it in a more of a campus-like approach to designing the park in order to develop joint use facilities and amenities that are shared both by the school as well as the, the parks. By taking this approach, it allows the city and the school district to stretch limited dollars. When looking at the size of park, we plan for a two to two and a half acre hour stay and play value, meaning people will stay for that long and play based on types of amenities that are incorporated into the design versus a park like C-63, which is a one to one and a half stay and play value because it's a smaller and more informal play. The challenge is that the, these security measures for schools via fences limits the use of school outdoor amenities to a certain extent, so we have to look at both and try to balance those. So, into, onto the public outreach, our first meeting, again, was virtual and was held in November of 2023. 60 residents attended and identified priorities, which included a youth cricket or multi-use field, shaded play areas, shaded picnic area, and basketball. The second in-person meeting was held in January of 2024, and 20 people attended. We shared that the given budget would not be able to fully develop the entire six, 7.6 acre site. In this sketch, we showed the youth cricket or multi-use field. We shared that parking that would connect to the future school, which would be in this slide to the left. A full court for basketball, which was proposed to have dual stripes for the game of cocoa, which if you don't know what the game of cocoa is, it's a.
Leave that for a question, so we can ask.
Oh, leave it for your question. I'll leave that then. I'll explain it later. And children's play area, a restroom, and a labyrinth or maze that are formed by a series of paths. Concerns are expressed regarding the labyrinth, which was larger compared to the size of the play area. We also presented options for the play area that could include a larger space with no shade or a smaller one with shade, simply to balance the budget. Residents were split on this. We did receive support for the cricket or multi-use field, and we received a definite no on the cocoa court. So, here's the final master plan. The cocoa court has been removed, and the labyrinth is now a natural play area. The park improvements include a multi-use grass area that can accommodate youth cricket or youth soccer, share, shaded play area, a covered picnic area with four tables, a restroom, a full court for basketball, off-street parking that will eventually connect to the elementary school, a looped pathway, a nature play area, landscaping and irrigation. The tan areas represent undeveloped spaces, and the brown areas represent pockets of planting, uh, water conserving plantings and bark mulch. By taking this approach and focusing on the identified priorities, the proposal does meet the $2.7 million construction budget. Since we will be building before the school is construction, we have made accommodations, again, to link the parking lot to the future school, and this plan has been shared with the school district where they had no additional comments. This plan was shared with the Parks and Recreation Commission at their June meeting, and the commission made the recommendation to forward this plan to council for formal approval. This shows some inspirational images. Because this park proposes some new things, the top row is more about the natural and informal pathways that are associated with the proposed natural play area. The natural play area, um, images on the bottom are representative of what those play features can be. So, when we talk about natural play areas, we're, we're talking about tree limbs, tree logs, boulders, and that type of amenity. So, at the risk of sounding repetitive, but in case someone's tuning in just to hear about this park, I'd like to pause again for a moment to pop, talk about the park financing that applies to all parks, again, in Creekview and Sierra Vista. In the case of Sierra Vista, the park financing plan was developed in 2010, so that's more than 14 years ago. The same factors described earlier for Creekview also apply here in Sierra Vista. The budgets identified in the park financing plan were tight, but were the best guess at that time. A construction cost index or an inflationary factor is applied when we develop, in order to develop an updated budget for each park. We still have post-COVID issues related to the construction industry, and the cost of construction is not going down. On top of the regulations described earlier about the Clean Water Act for stormwater pollution protection and the Clean Air Act, which affects the emissions of construction equipment, since this park proposes parking, we also have the Green Building Code that requires us to comply with the installation of EV charging infrastructure. Again, these are not originally contemplated in the finance plans. Again, water conserve, water conservation remains a factor in park designs and has been implemented over the past 14 years or so. This consideration affects the amount of grass that is included within each park. We have many, many, many more parks to build in Sierra Vista, and we need to be, remain prudent to stay within the established budgets to ensure that all parks planned within Sierra Vista can be built. And note that KT-52 is one of the five parks under development right now in Sierra Vista. Those, those are actually being worked on, and construction documents are being developed as we speak. This leads to, again, difficult choices to be made for our parks moving forward. While we would like to be able to provide as many varied amenities as possible, we continue to be challenged by both the available funding resources and the increased cost of construction. So, to fully build out the entire 7.6 acres of KT-52, we would need an additional $2.5 to $3 million. So, the next steps for this park. If approved, we will move forward with construction documents, obtain permits, and seek to break ground in the similar timing of C-63, which would be spring of 2025 with a targeted completion in spring of 2026. The action tonight is to approve the KT-52 master plan. So, this concludes my presentation, and I stand ready to answer your cocoa questions.
All right. Any questions?
So, I'm just gonna ask.
Go ahead.
It didn't get put into the plan. I saw that the neighborhood didn't want it, but can you tell me what cocoa is?
Cocoa. Cocoa is a, it, it uses the same size as a basket, full court for basketball, and so it has these stripes on it on each side, and it's a game of tag. It's the second most popular game in South Asia. And we thought to propose that because we're putting in cricket, and the demographics, serves the same demographics. That being said, if, you know, if there was a demand in the future, it would be fairly easy to add the stripes on the basketball court.
Is this the next pickleball? If we did it, we would be ahead of the curve?
We'll be trending.
Trending, yeah, right? Lots of hashtags. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I have one, Bruce. The labyrinth, is it, is it something, is it like cement on the ground, or is it something above ground, or?
It's a little bit of both. It's, it's, basically, the pathways are going to be natural, and in this case, it will be gravel, or is proposed to be gravel, and it will be different pathways in a maze leading up to some of the natural play elements. Some of the separation, if you were going in a circle, for example, could be some native plant material that helps define those pathways, as well as helps define the spaces for the natural play areas.
But you're not, you're not enclosed. It's, I keep thinking of like, you know, Halloween, and then they say the labyrinth, and you're going, and I go, not something scary where somebody's going to get lost.
No, the, we'll keep, the, the plant material below, you will be able to see everybody in there, and it's, it's more of a, you know, just follow the path.
Walk around and a little bit. Yes. I feel better.
Full visibility, not scary, no black holes.
Thank you.
A couple of questions. Are we able to play cricket on our long fields?
The, it's hard. We have a cricket at two locations right now. We have a cricket at the Mighty Soccer Fields, and that's a full size, but all those fields are regulation size. So, cricket, you play all the way around, 360 degrees around, so it does require two fields with the cricket pitch in the middle. The second location is at Santucci Park, between those two soccer fields, and those are, are large. This one is more of a youth size, so it is a smaller than both Mighty or Santucci, but there's a demand to serve the youth cricket player, so that's why we proposed something like that.
And that leads me to my next question. I didn't see it on, on the illustration, but you mentioned parking. How many parking spaces are you envisioning? Are they on the school site, or are they, I didn't see them in the?
Yeah, there is parking, and it's, there's about, proposed, and it's, there's about 20 spaces right now. Usually, since it is connected to the school parking, it, the numbers will double, double or triple. Because the school's not there, one of the things that we contemplated is to seek some temporary parking accommodations, work with the school until they build.
I'm sorry, I got distracted. How many spaces?
Twenty-ish.
Twenty spaces?
Twenty-ish. Plus, then you have all the onsite street parking.
Not enough.
Yeah.
Given the popularity of cricket, that's not enough.
Yes. So, one of the things we're, we're looking at is the future of the school site, and then also being able to use part of the school site in, as a temporary parking until they build, formally build their parking.
And so, will the school have the same EV requirements for parking as we do?
I am not sure about that. I would doubt it.
Okay.
Because they have a different regulations to follow.
Yeah. A lot of exemption.
Yeah, no, I, after going to the Pakistani Cultural Festival and hearing that the United States team made of Pakistani, Americans beat the Pakistani team, I became fixated with, with cricket and can't wait for it. I'm gonna open it up for public comment. No public comment, I'll close the public comment, ask the council, yeah, councilman Albert?
Fantastic about these parks, that's great. I, I live on the west side of town, and one of the things I've noticed over the years, what you've hit both times, is the funding for the parks is way under what was originally proposed, and, and some of these specific plans have taken decades to develop, and the budget that was set for them just is not adequate compared to the cost nowadays. I'm not gonna be on the council in the future because I'll be terming out, but I want to encourage my fellow council members to, to really seriously consider down the road, we've got to start thinking about some of our surplus dollars, going back and refurbishing some of our parks, building them up, because, you know, we're great at numbers of parks. Roseville has so many parks, which is fantastic, but the, the number of features, the quality of just amenities in our parks is pretty thin, especially a lot of these newer ones that I keep seeing be built, and I, I know it's really tough on staff, and people want, you know, I want a playground and a picnic place, and, and we just, we're, we're having to pick between things that should have been there in the budget. So, I just want to encourage you down the road, please think about our, our residents and help beef up some of our parks a little bit. They really are going to need some retrofitting to, to make them really nice like some of our other parks in the city, so.
Any other comments? I neglected to ask a question. Could I get slide eight up? I think it's slide eight. I don't think you showed slide eight. I know what's in the bottom there. Is that top photo intended to show that this, this has been, I recognize, I think one person in that photo, and I think he's sitting right there. I don't think I recognize anyone. I think that there's a different city attorney. Is this supposed to reckon, demonstrate that it's been 2010 or 11 since?
No, it's just a picture of the council.
Yeah. I see councilman Albert, but, uh, and then I see, yeah.
I like where you're going, Mayor, yes.
See a different, see a different city clerk, but I think it's to say that it's been a long time.
It's been a while.
You know, candidly, candidly, and, you know, my, 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 my humor is an attempt to educate, but honestly, these regulations are going to force people, where I used to play, in the street, right? I mean, this is going to make parking, to your point, councilman Albert, I mean, these parks are just going to get priced out of, of our ability to provide the same quality of parks. I mean, we had this issue before I, right before I got on the council with Central Park or Harry Crab Park, where the operation and maintenance couldn't be done, but now, you know, now we've got different regulations that are really making, you know, parks almost cost prohibitive. Do I have anything else? No, I love, I love cricket. I want to learn how to play cricket. I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 9.2, the city council will consider approving the master plan for KT-52, a school park site, a seven and a half acre park located at Sierra Village Drive within the Sierra Vista area of Roseville. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilor Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshell.
Absolutely. Yes. And we've come to the point in there, thank you very much for your presentation. Come to the point in the agenda where we'll be opening up for a second round of public comment on non-agenda items. Seeing none, ask the city manager if he has anything to add.
The reports, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, ask our city attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Albert, will you lead us off with your committee activity?
You bet. I know the city attorney was in Iceland while the rest of us were in hell.
[laughing]
Yeah, Hotland. One of the cool things that happened in our city, and I think all of us got to experience it, was Union Pacific's big boy came to town, downtown, and I can let the others talk about what they experienced, but one of the things I wanted to just touch on is, events like this drew people from all over. We had people from Napa had contacted us, old friends, hey, we're coming to your town to see the train, and it's amazing they heard about it there. But our restaurants downtown were jam-packed, of course, our parking garages were jam-packed, but it was a fantastic economic thing that took place. I just thought I would touch on that, from that perspective, and that's one of the, the neat things for some of our future sports complexes, bringing people from out of town imports dollars into our community, and those dollars really build our economy, helps out our businesses, and it's just a great, a great thing. Plus, it was just a real fun event as well. My time since our last meeting, which has been a little while, was spent probably mostly in different neighborhood association meetings through our Kona, just getting to hear about the different issues in the neighborhoods, and talking with them, answering a lot of questions about growth, that seems to be a real big topic out on the west side. And then the, the Fourth of July Parade was really fun, just watching a lot of people packed in here, watching the parade, and that was a neat community event as well. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Councilwoman Kuchi?
Just a couple things. On our agenda tonight, under consent, because we're talking about parks, the Hall Park and the Veterans Park, the play structures are gonna be replaced. So as we build new facilities, we also have to keep in mind that we have to keep vigilance on what we have, so that it's renovated and safe and fun to play with for everybody. I went to three different water meetings recently. South Placer Wastewater Authority meeting, and we're just, we're looking at different fees, and we approved a capacity fee, it's $50 less than it had been. NACWA, Northern California Water Association, most of our meetings were about working together on, on different issues, and for them, it was coming together on floodplain and restorations, but from not only, from a farm perspective, but from birds and, and fish, and working with state and federal entities. So it was, it was, it was good. We worked closely together, but ways we can even be better. And Regional Water Authority, learning where they're at with their Sacramento Regional Water Bank, and they're also, also working on a project with the Department of Water Resources on, on the regional watershed and how we can do things better. So that was, that was pretty good. As far as the big boy, the train, a lot of people from out of state, and there were people that used to live in Roseville came back. My husband is a board member at the Carnegie Museum, and there were, there were hundreds of people, and they were coming from different entities, and they were real excited to be here. And I share Councilmember Albert's enthusiasm about, about the, the train. I think it, I did another thing, it brought people together. You saw people from all over, Roseville, all over, everywhere, and some people came before, you know, as the train came in, took pictures, the Tuesday, the Friday, the Saturday, but also the day that it left. I was there about three or four different times, bringing my, my grandson and my daughter, and then my husband and I went. But I just see the enjoyment and the, the joy from little kids to all people of all ages being there, and I really felt this is one of the ties that brought Roseville together, and, and it was really nice. Yes, it was hot, and yes, we had lots of, you know, a lot of people trying to find parking spots, but it was fun. And I thank Union Pacific for doing this and making stops here, and it was, you know, because we are a railroad town, I mean, that's how it was founded, and we are very, one of the biggest areas that do take care of renovation on, on trains and fixed trains, and, you know, locomotives, I should say, and, and so having them come back, and it's a, it's a, it's also a place where many people, it's an employment center too for us as well. And I think I hit all those. Just a, just a quick comment, you know, this week, what happened this week here in, in the United States should have, you know, never happened, and maybe, you know, maybe we all have, you know, peace and safety for all of us in the United States and in other countries, and, and peace, safety, and work together. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Mendoza?
So I attended some of the same events my fellow council members did. The big boy was really exciting to see come down through Roseville from Reno and head on up through Auburn, and on its way, on its predetermined journey. Really cool, my wife Kristen and I, we got to take a tour of some of the cars, and I just wanna give a really big thank you to Adrian at Union Pacific, him and his, his crew, they did an amazing job, everybody involved in that. And then also, a lot of people forget, because it's Union Pacific, that there's a big lift on the city side too. So thank you to all of our city staff and all of our people who worked so diligently to get the thousands of people through the streets, and the people who walked against the red lights and the no walking signs and everything, and were patient with visitors who were here for this historic event. Your, your, your hard work and your patience with the large crowds did not go unnoticed, so thank you for all of your efforts on that. I also, it was great to see everybody at the Fourth of July Parade, that was a lot of fun, always a fun time. I do agree with my fellow council members, I wish it was a tad bit cooler. The only cooling we got, I think, was when we picked up speed on Douglas, as we went back to our cars, it was nice to kind of get that breeze. And a big thank you too to Chief Barti and the Fire Department for always extending that invitation to us to be on that, on that fire truck. And no other reports from my assignments at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, great. I'll pick up where everybody, I remember, I came into town on Thursday, and Union, and big boy was here. Union Pacific, which has been part of the city for 160 years, was having an event for their employees in our city, was filled Thursday evening with that. You know, where this is one of only two, two, two-day stops that Union Pacific had on this, and the other one is coming up in Ogden, Utah, so it is a real testament to, to this partnership and relationship between Union Pacific and the city, that they chose the rail yard, which is the biggest rail yard west of the Mississippi, and I echo the sentiments of everyone about, there was a lot of organization, a lot of involvement from our police, a lot of involvement from our public affairs, promoting the event, making sure that the event went off safely. And I had an opportunity to be on Good Day Sacramento on Friday, and then, on behalf of the council, welcome everybody on Saturday as the, open the, open the gates, and, you know, it's an opportunity. We all are out in the community, and some folks came up, and, you know, they wanted to have a picture, your, their child's picture with the mayor, but some came up and took that opportunity to talk about city issues, and so I always, I always value that. What a terrific, it was sad to see big boy and his steam chugging, chugging east toward Sparks, where I, somebody else, somebody used to work here was picking up, picking up the joy that we were all feeling. Anyway, you know, on our agenda are an awful lot of things, and I just wanted to point out, there were two resolutions tonight that we don't, we didn't talk about, but one is, and it seems appropriate, given our presentations tonight, a resolution honoring Parks and Recreation Month, which is July, and then honoring one of our longtime employees in public affairs, Brian Jacobson. So those of you who are watching, I encourage you to look at our agenda and, and look at that. Had an opportunity at the end of June to go on the SECOG Study Mission to Denver with Lauren Hawker of our staff. It was really, really illuminating. Denver has, Denver's a head and behind us on a variety of things, so we had an opportunity to look at, at some of their affordable housing, some of their redevelopment, and I think that'll have input on our commercial quarters and other things like that. So there were some valuable lessons. The Sac Metro Chamber new CEO was there on, along with a number of developers, so that was, and a number of council members from around the region, so that was very valuable. And this is something, well, and since I think we met last, didn't the Supreme Court make a decision on?
They made a lot of decisions.
Well, one that's near and dear to our heart, I think, is Johnson versus Grants Pass, and I think what, what I understand from that is, Roseville was part of a 13-city amicus brief on this, and a tribute to our staff, that some of that language got picked up in the Supreme Court decision, which was just a tribute to our staff on the challenges and different facets of homelessness. Councilman Albert and others have mentioned Fourth of July, at least on my end of the town, it was, it was a lot quieter. I'd like to ask, I know there, there's a, there's a letter that's circulating to the governor on a by-state task force to control the influx of, of illegal fireworks, so California and Nevada, is that something we should, we should have staff come back and take a look at, and see if we should write a letter from the city of Roseville? Yes, no?
I would be okay with that.
Or just find out information about it.
Dennis Revaill has the letter if you want it.
Yeah, just see, see what it's about, and if we wanna do it.
So, could, could you come back and tell us?
I'm aware of the letter and the effort, I'm happy to share that with the council and get further information.
That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, the last thing, I thought these vehicles had gotten towed to the site, but I understand there was a fire at Bubba's Auto Body on Washington? And have we gone out and taken a look at that? Has there been, has there been a code, a via, code inspection on that property?
There's an ongoing open code enforcement effort on that site right now, yes.
I don't have anything else? If that's, oh, where's chief? National Night Out is August, where's Erica? August 6?
Eight, six is down.
So it's right before we meet again, isn't it? Okay. So the National Night Out is August 6th, will all, all of us will be throughout the city that night, and then we're adjourned to our next city council meeting on August 7th. For that, thank you very much, everybody.